Members of the City Council, please attend a call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM, Tuesday, March 12th, 2013, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Emmens?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, Jeffrey. Ladies and gentlemen, before first, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. It's great to see the sunshine today. The first thing on your work session agenda was, I put that in the past tense, a briefing on the property related to the tunnel project. And as you know, George and I talked with the attorney for the plaintiffs today, and we concluded that it's best to postpone this. Postpone it at least to the first council meeting in June. So that's the recommendation from George and me, that the consideration, your consideration on the regular session be deferred to your first meeting in June. So we will not give you a briefing tonight in here on those properties. However...
Wise choice.
Thank you. Next item is the tolls resolution. And this is also in your agenda package for your regular meeting. George and I met with the attorney after you decided that, yes, you want to take a more active role. And in that discussion, it was concluded that the best position for the city to take was a very emphatic resolution. This resolution has merit and value. And as you know, the attorney for the plaintiffs has filed this cross-brief asking for summary judgment. I have sent this to you both in electronic format and in paper format. If you need additional copies, please let me know. This is a good reading. It's very logical, very thoughtful, and very strategic in value. So the recommendation is that you consider this resolution during your regular session meeting tonight. Be glad to answer any questions about this. The next item is a status report on Victory Village. And Fred's going to give this, and you have a PowerPoint presentation. The last time that you all discussed this was as a group, was your last meeting in November of 2012. And that was actually here for that meeting. And also, we've gone back and reviewed the video. Yes, sir?
Can I interrupt you real quick? Going back to the tolls, is the authorization for the $25,000 in the legal fees not here? At what time are we bringing that up? I thought we were going to have that ready for us to act on tonight.
Well, you mentioned $50,000 at your last meeting, so you need to decide to tell us, you know, how much money you...
No, we said $50,000. What did I just say?
$50,000.
Oh, I said $25,000. Okay. No, it was $50,000.
Is it $50,000? Then we'll have that for your next council meeting.
Okay. I think we're going to have it for tonight.
No, no, no. We're going to have a discussion, Mayor, about how, where the monies went.
It's going to be paid out.
Paid out.
Yeah.
Attorney versus PAC, that kind of thing, before we decided to do that. We haven't had the discussion yet.
Okay. No, I thought we did say we were going right to the attorney and not giving it to the PAC because that would open up other issues. But I'm okay with extending that to next time around, but...
Well, we had a discussion about...
Get that on the agenda.
Yeah. Whether or not we would join the lawsuit. And with that discussion with the attorney, we concluded the best position is to go with a resolution. So we'll have the appropriation ordinance at your next meeting. $50,000?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Sorry for that.
Yes, sir. Thanks for bringing that up. Last time you met on this subject, or discussed this subject, was the last meeting in November, when the vice chair of the Economic Development already gave you a briefing on the multifamily aspect of the project. And at that time, it was not market rate rentals. And you took action, or it was the consensus of council, that you wanted market rate. And actually, as you'll see tonight, that was a validation, a reaffirmation of a position that you had taken back in July. So let me have Fred come up, and he'll lead us through a presentation to get everybody refreshed as far as the memory is concerned, and then what lies ahead. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, good evening. As John indicated, excuse me, Mr. Rowe indicated, we're here just to provide maybe a refresher of where we've been over the last 15, 18 years on Victory Village. So tonight, we would like to give you current status, some investment, and some of the conditions of the project. In 1998, the city purchased raw land that was to be used for the Victory Village development. It was roughly 110 acres of land, and was purchased, as I said, raw. The property had been cleared of the units that had occupied that site. In August of 2003, almost 10 years ago, a master developer was selected through a competitive process. In 2006, we changed streams, I guess, a little bit. Instead of going from a strictly industrial complex, we moved to the city industrial complex mixed use, and created a concept plan and a series of design guidelines that would dictate how the property was to be developed, what percentages of uses would be in the site, those types of things, to get the project that we had envisioned for this large parcel of land in the city. We came through, and we've massaged that a couple of times in 2007 and 2009 with the developer. We actually went back and did zoning text changes, and created a point where we felt we're moving ahead. In July 12th, and I think this is important because we came back for another, I guess you'd say massage, or making certain everything fit the way it should at the developer's request, and created actually three separate actions. One was a street closure, one was a rezoning, and when I say rezoning, it was changing the conditions of that conditional zoning application. And then the third point was changing the text of the zoning ordinance to allow the planning director, who would be required to come to council and let them know, but not for the public hearing, to make minor movements or adjustments to the street layout within certain parameters. Now, the thing I think is very, very important to note is all of these changes, plus the original rezoning and all of the amendments that have come along, have had a series of conditions, proffers, requirements, if you will, that have dictated how the property is, again, how to be used. This last change, there were probably three very large items in there, and then there were some other little items that talked about how it was to be developed. But I think the three ones were the developer had to develop three pedestrian plazas as part of the street closure and the rezoning. Specific design standards for the multifamily were incorporated. And then on the street closure, there was a specific requirement that said all of the residential multifamily had to be market rate. And that was a part of that action that was taken in July for that street closure. If you remember, this was the proposed, or not proposed, but this was the existing concept plan. The street was the street that was being closed. This was the proposed new layout. As we moved ahead with the street closure and then the re-subdivision and the modification, that requirement for market rate actually went through the entire parcel, not just for that piece of street that was closed. It actually went across the entire parcel once that was created into one. Moving ahead, in July, from July to really October, the developer was working with, EDA and an architectural review committee had been created to help move this along for the vision that we all wanted. And the developer was working through that committee to create a site plan or a set of plans that would follow those visions. In November of 2000, November the 27th, as Mr. Rowe indicated, the economic development and the assistant director of EDA came in and gave you a presentation of the project and the fact that it would be not market rate. And at that time, you reaffirmed that commitment that was made in July with the street closure. You reaffirmed it by saying, "We don't want non, we want market rate, period." And I think the charge was, do whatever is necessary to make certain we get that. To do that, the city manager then prepared a series of letters to the developer and to VHDA expressing our concern and our lack of support for that type of activity. And then finally, in December, end of December, the developer notified the company that was doing the units that they would have to be market rate, and that has since dissolved. There's a second point that's been coming along that we'd like to get you to understand because it's been so long, and as these things occur over a period of time, we tend to forget them. We've spent a lot of money in Victory Village right now, and this is a conservative figure. We looked and took the big chunks. I didn't do the little odds and ends here and there everywhere. But we think conservatively, we've spent over $29 million in the redevelopment of the Victory Village community. Site work, that was actual dollars that we put into TCC site. Land acquisition, the EDA grant. The VDOT grant for new roads actually was taking the money we get from VDOT for the road maintenance and moved it into VDOT for that year to do the new roads. So we have made a serious commitment to this project over the 15 years. Now, the next steps, I think we all want to know, what do we need to do to keep...
Well, thank Fred. That's why we reaffirmed the fact that we wanted the market rate because of the investment that the city has and how important that whole corridor is. So it all falls in line. We're consistent.
Yes, sir. We just wanted to make certain that everybody understood where we were and why we were coming this way. You know, a lot of time, and this is staff and visions and working and saying, this is a large piece of land, one of the largest we have in the city. We want to make it something that is a project we can be proud of 50 years from now as we are, you know, when it first gets built. And so to accomplish that, to continue accomplishing that, the next steps are we're to meet with the developer to discuss these conditions and the requirements that he has to meet to make certain this vision comes to fruition. And then the next point after that is schedule a future work session with the master developer so he can present to you where he would like to be moving with his development and the timeline he has for that.
Do we have any idea now where he is, or should we just wait till later, John?
I'm meeting with him next week. As you know, I had a meeting scheduled for this past week, and it was unfortunately canceled. Don't read anything into that, I mean, those things happen. So we have rescheduled it for next Wednesday. And so I'll have a, but it may take more than one meeting. But as soon as we get the information we need that we can send to you, then we'll schedule the master developer.
Okay. Very good. Ms. Moody?
You know, given our investment thus far at $29 million, what do we anticipate the return on investment? How many years at the projected real estate value? And you probably might not have that now, but that'd be good to know.
That's a very good question. And it's a function of what he proposes, what the master developer. And so it's very much unknown right now.
If he's still not proposing a market rate, I would suggest you save him some time and us too, and not bring him before us if it's not going to be market rate.
The message is very clear to him that it's market rate, unless you change your mind.
No, no, we're not.
We've got this investment here, and we know what that corridor means to the city, what it means to complement Newport, the TCC, New Campus, as well as the Cavalier Manor Neighborhood and Crystal Lake. And absolutely, we know exactly what we've got invested and what we want here. So I don't know if we're going to take this and all of this investment and then allow just because, something less than what we had in the original plan. Yes, ma'am?
Okay. One of the things, since I remember when the beginning transaction started, one of the things was a master plan. And in that master plan, everything was lined out. And there was supposed to have been a hotel complex at one point in the master plan, but didn't go that route because of what had happened as the interstate and everything else came through and barricaded. But what we need to do is that we receive profits on what the investment is going to be, that it comes back into the city. What we have to also bear in mind is the impact on the city with the tolls that are going to be coming through on interstate. I just left a meeting on some things there. So I think we need to make sure, whatever the plan is...
We're not going to have tolls, but go ahead.
Okay. Well, you own that transportation department, you know. But I know with the public, there's been a lot of discussion on it with the meetings, and I was on the transportation board too at one time. But one of the things I think that we need to be mindful, that we can put and make plans, but if it's not in concrete, they will drag on and on. Look at that parcel of land, how long it's been there, and we've been marketing it. And having known the history of it, I want to make sure that we pursue and follow through with the developers, that they follow through with their plans. Because that was part of the original plan when we built it out there. And I was on that board at that time when we looked at it.
And how long has the master developer had this now in his hands?
The master developer was selected in August of 2003.
2003. So we're at 10 years at this point?
Roughly, a few months out of 10 years, yes, sir.
Ms. Moody?
Actually, I think Elizabeth was next, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Moody?
You all right?
Yeah, Mr. Moody?
What I was going to ask, I know the last time we discussed this project, there was some confusion over exactly what this VHDA money represented. And did it actually mean that this was subsidized housing in the true sense of the word? Or are these homes, when they're assessed by Ms. Culpepper, they're going to be assessed at full market value? Is that an accurate statement?
Well, the proposal that came forward was an income restricted proposal. So you had to have certain incomes.
Levels.
Yes, sir. In order to be there.
Depending on the number of people in the household.
Exactly. And so in that regard, it's not market rate. There were restrictions on one's income in order to qualify to live there. Now, how it's assessed becomes another issue. And again, apartments are, as Janie told you when she gave her report two weeks ago, apartments are appreciating in enforcement.
But I guess I'm getting back to the return on investment. Does this hurt the return on investment, or is this just, you know, are we hung up over the term market rate housing?
I don't think you're hung up. I think market rate is a very noble objective, and I would not recommend in this market that you change that. I think it's really fitting to have market rate development at this site.
And that definition is clear of what constitutes market rate. It's not like there's a lot of room. They've got clear definitions, HUD, VHDA, all, and they're aligned with what market rate is. But yes, it will impact our turn on our investment if we take a move in a different direction. You better believe it's going to hurt us. Ms. Simmons?
I was just going to say, I'm not a development expert. Aren't many of us at this table that are. And since I haven't been here for a while, you know, to know what all this is, I would like to hear from, once you have your meeting with the developer, what it is that's still in a plan, whether it's still a hotel or some kind of housing units or what they are, so we either fish or cut bait and move on.
Good. And we'll do that.
And understand what all that, back to Mr. Moody's point, is I was here for that work session. I wasn't sitting at this table, but I was in the back row. But I'm still not clear, because all I kept hearing was, these are apartments for people like most of the people in this room, you know, that are teachers and police officers and firefighters and, you know, normal people. And I'm like, we're making them sound like they're bad people. And I didn't understand, I still don't get it.
Well, the way it was, like I mean, I talked to the developers, one of the developer workers afterwards, the maximum income to live there was $45,000 for a family of four. Okay? So my perspective is, okay, well, you make $45,000, $145,000, you ought to be able to move there if you want to, if you want to pay the rents or whatever they are, and not limit people. Because, you know, we have Newport there, we have TCC there, we have Batterwee there. That's a great development. And to limit who can live there, we ought to make it open to anyone who wants to live there, whether, because people decide for themselves how much money they want to spend on housing. So to say because you make $50,000 a year, you can't live there, we shouldn't be doing that.
I agree. Ms. Moody?
Also, the other, the other point is that it did, I believe, pass the EDA. I think it was unanimous. So in going forward, maybe we need to make sure they're included in that presentation and so we can make sure we're on the same page.
And that's what I've said before, we need to make sure that the chairman of the EDA, PPIC, Planning Commission, and all those understand our vision, what our hopes, dreams, and desires are, so that when they see things coming for them...
Yeah. If what they say is true, the EDA should never have blessed unanimously, which is exactly what happened.
George?
Just as a point of clarification, the action that the EDA took was to review the architectural renderings that were submitted by the developer. It did not take any action with respect to the nature of the project. Had that project been constructed and been a market rate project and looked exactly like the one that the EDA got, it would have gotten the same approval. You could construct a market rate project that looked like that, and it passed muster. That's all that EDA was considering at the time. They didn't act at all on the non-market...
The financing part of it.
Right.
That's a very good point, because they're not the un-power of the zoning, they're the un-power of the appearance. Our zoning official makes the call whether or not it fits within the parameters that you've established for the zoning.
And I'll leave this question for you, or for, are the major committees, commissions, are they giving each other notes or having liaisons between the commissions?
I do know the Planning Commission receives a copy of each commission's monthly notes and is dispersed, and then questions as, you know, we go through. But the Planning Commission, I can say, does receive that.
So the left hand knows what the right hand is doing, and then we can, because, you know, we had that problem 12 years ago, and we solved it by having people go to the meetings when you and I were playing together. So maybe that's, if we're not doing that now, maybe that's something we ought to look back into, looking to do it again.
This is very good, and we look forward to that meeting as you meet with the developer. Thank you very much.
I might ask Patrick, this is in addition to your agenda, we have two more things. There's a rumor that I heard, and I've now heard it in several different spots, about TCC, Tidewater Community College, moving its visual arts center from downtown Portsmouth. And so I asked Patrick to chase down the facts of this rumor, and I think it's important enough that we tell you what we know. First, tell you the rumor, and then tell you what the facts are. Patrick? If we can turn the lights on, please. Oh, we can, oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is just a visual, sort of, to give you a frame of reference for part of the rumor that we're talking about, and you have some talking points in front of you. As you know, these things have a way of spreading and getting out of control, so coming and addressing this with you, which I would recall for you follows hard on the heels of the fantastic presentation we got from the community college president and Michelle Woodhouse, the provost, Dr. Woodhouse here in Portsmouth, who expressed how pleased they are with the campus's development, the campus's growth. And Ms. Woodhouse spent a good bit of time talking about her downtown visual arts center, which she oversees, and the vibrancy and the number of students. But the rumor that's going around is that TCC is relocating its visual arts center out of downtown, possibly out of Portsmouth altogether, depending on who you might be talking to. And the reason they're doing this is because they cannot get enough parking to accommodate their needs. They're being forced to give up parking spaces that they're already entitled to, that their students and faculty don't feel safe in downtown, and the college is concerned about the overall image that downtown Portsmouth has in getting new students to enroll in their visual arts center. So that's the rumor. It takes various iterations, but those are essentially the points. So the response, of course, to that rumor is, as most of you are aware, is TCC has no issues with its parking. They came to you, they expressed a need for new parking, not just in response to the potential development of this surface parking lot they have here, but as a result of their growth generally. Council, the administration worked with them to meet their need on additional spaces in the county street deck there. And TCC expresses that they're quite happy with that arrangement. It's the arrangement they requested, and they received. They have no exceptional concerns about the security of their employees and students. Now, I don't want to speak for them on security issues. We're all concerned. We have a security dressed person here in City Hall. Security is just a topic of our lives these days, and TCC provides for its students and its faculty accordingly. But the rumor would be that their students and their faculty walking around in downtown, they feel unsafe. So just sort of as a frame of reference, if one does park in the county street garage, they can walk through the beautiful new pedestrian plaza the council constructed as part of the children museum renovation, pop out on the high street, and be at their visual arts center in two blocks. And again, TCC is comfortable with that arrangement. And then finally, they don't believe there's a perception issue, just like you don't, just like we don't. There's nothing wrong with the city's downtown. It's a fantastic, vibrant urban center for Hampton Roads. They recognize it. The young people you see walking around with the portfolios under their arms, they recognize it, and so does TCC. But like any good rumor, there's always a kernel of truth buried somewhere inside of it. And in this case, the issues surrounding that visual arts center are that TCC leases that building. They lease it from the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Agency. It was a 20-year lease, two-year terms, 10 of them, and they are in the final term of that 20-year lease. It expires at the end of next year. They get a pretty good rental rate on it. They have an option to purchase that building at any point in time during the lease arrangement for $2 million. Ms. Culpepper has the building assessed significantly more than that, so $2 million might appear to be an attractive price to them. And they have budgeted in their capital plan for a number of years for the purchase of that facility. In fact, it is one of their top three to four capital projects for Tidewater Community College, which, as we all know, is the second largest community college in the state. This is one of their top three to four capital projects, and it's one of the top 10 to 12 capital projects for the entire community college system statewide. That having been said, it's also not funded. Were it to be funded, TCC would contemplate purchasing that building. They may contemplate using their foundation to purchase it also. But TCC has had some conversations about moving the visual arts center out to its Portsmouth campus. The Portsmouth campus has four buildings constructed, a student center under construction, and two new pad sites out there that can accommodate another 350,000 to 400,000 square feet of new college facilities. So one of the things the college is looking at with that capital budget... So, one of the things the college is looking at with that capital budget allocation is the possibility of combining the classroom and the workshop space for its visual arts center, along with a new technology center that they would build out on their campus at Victory. That would give them synergy between their student services, student support services, as well as the administration, consolidate most of what they have in Portsmouth on one campus. That option, obviously, would be considerably more expensive than purchasing that building in downtown, and they'd have to consider it. The city manager, myself, and some others are going to be meeting with Frank Dunn, who you all know, the Community College President and the Provost, here fairly shortly, to talk about how we can be involved in this process as a city going forward. But in no case, if, even if they were to move out to Victory Village or to Victory Campus, would that happen within the next five years. Budget money's not there, the design's not done, it just takes that long to do something like that. So, at a minimum, they're going to need a lease renewal out of PRHA, whether it's short-term or midterm or otherwise. So, again, you know, they're happy in downtown, their students are happy in downtown, we're happy they're in downtown, and all this is contingent on a big if, which is a funding piece.
And I might ask James Wright to tell you about the lighting improvements that we have made to the county street garage. You can read your newspaper at nighttime in that garage now.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Member of City Council. We just recently, I'd say about five or six months ago, completed a project, actually in all the city garages, but specifically including the county street garage, where we upgraded the lighting, provided, I think it's high-pressure sodium lighting, so that it can get, get more, more light in there and, and make it more safe. Also, actually, at this facility, we're also looking at the top deck currently. There were some electrical issues. We're working with properties management and a contractor, and we're correcting the lighting actually on the top floor of that, of that facility.
And the funding for the lighting and all, James, that's all part of the Recovery Act funds to the President that we did with all of our garages, including the one here, correct?
Yes, sir. That was actually through a grant, and it's actually free money, so to speak. We were reimbursed in full.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next subject on your council agenda tonight is consideration of a zoning permit for Kroger's. And I thought it would be appropriate for you to hear, again, the economic impact that this will have, and Patrick will tell you here, but also read the public out there. Patrick?
Thank you, sir. Good evening again. Sorry if I'll be repeating myself twice, but, but this is the kind of information normally you're not going to cover in your public hearing, and we wanted to make sure that you and the public were very well aware of the impact of this project on the city of Portsmouth. So, by way of background, Kroger, Cincinnati-based company, the second-largest grocer in the United States behind Walmart, came into the Hampton Roads market in 2000 through the acquisition of the Hannaford stores. They converted those over to Kroger's, and they really haven't spent a whole lot of investment in Hampton Roads, working on their market share since. The average-sized Kroger store is about fifty-five thousand square feet. We have a fantastic one out in Churchland. But Kroger is introducing to the marketplace not just a commitment to market share and to investment, but bringing a new concept that they've rolled out in some other places around the country, and it's called the Kroger Marketplace. The Kroger Marketplace is a hundred and twenty thousand square feet. They want to hit sales of a million dollars a week in these stores. They're about eighty percent grocery and twenty percent general merchandise, so they're not exclusively grocery, just as over the past fifteen, maybe twenty years now, you've seen Walmart, Target push into the grocery space. Now, what you're seeing is Kroger pushing back and pushing into the general merchandising space. So, jewelry sales, home goods, pharmacy, electronics, toys, a good deal of sales in prepared foods, all anticipated at this store and will be part of it. To see one, if you're as excited perhaps as I am, you'll have to drive to Richmond. It's the first store in the Mid-Atlantic region. It's on the site of the former Cloverleaf Mall. The second store, you'll have to wait till near the end of this year for, will be opened on Holland Road. It's the conversion of the old Kmart there, and they plan on opening that by the end of the year. And then, I'm absolutely certain, we're going to beat the city of Suffolk to the marketplace because our permitting and approval process is considerably more expedient than theirs because we're so business-friendly here in the city of Portsmouth.
Good touch, John.
So, we will have the third Kroger in Virginia.
Is that matched by the perception that the developer community is working on?
On the nose, on the nose.
We're in demand.
Perception becomes reality, so let's get there. They have announced another store on College Drive as well, but ultimately, that's really just the tip of the iceberg. When Kroger first started talking to us, they were talking about eight to ten of these marketplaces in Hampton Roads. They're now talking as many as fifteen to eighteen. They're about twenty million dollars apiece, do the math. That's a lot of money that this company is getting ready to spend in our region, with the intent of being one of the top players, obviously, in, in the grocery market here in Hampton Roads. They first signed their letter of intent with the EDA back in September of last year, so not terribly long, back to that expediency thing. We got a letter of intent, which is merely a bullet point document that highlights what they intend to do and what EDA would like to see with regard to that property, executed then in September. They will be constructing their marketplace store and a fueling center, which will be out on Frederick, down towards Walmart, as opposed to towards Turnpike on that end of the property. The store will be expandable to a hundred and forty thousand square feet, and your planning folks will cover some of that. Twenty-million-dollar investment, two-hundred-and-fifty-three to three-hundred jobs, and about nine-hundred-thousand dollars projected in annual real estate and sales tax revenues. So, return on investment, Mr. Moody, ought to be pretty substantial.
And they can sell a million dollars a day?
A week.
A week, a week.
A day?
That's still a lot. That is a lot.
How about the two out parcels there? We made any headway with that?
Actually, it's a million one, and it's pretty easy to multiply by the sales tax to, to figure out what our, what our take is on that. The balance of the development is going to be developed by Cress EG, and that's a partnership between a retail developer and Ellis Gibson Development Group, who many of you know, they built our Middle Street Garage, the Social Services Building. They were a primary developer at Red Mill and throughout Hampton Roads. So, quality development, they're going to add another sixty thousand square feet of space, junior anchor next to the Kroger, then a midsize, and then some smaller spaces adjacent to that. Think home goods and clothing, think restaurant, think pet supplies, think sporting goods, without naming any names because none of the leases are executed. Those are the categories that are being targeted. And then there will be two, two more out parcels developed, one on the corner of Frederick and Turnpike, which will be a family-style sit-down restaurant, and a little bit more small shop space actually on Turnpike facing towards that side. So, that is going to be another sixty thousand square feet, ten million dollars in investment, another two-hundred jobs, and another three to four hundred thousand dollars a year in annual real estate and sales tax revenues. The companies are paying essentially fair market value to the Economic Development Authority for the property, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the entire parcel, so a two-point-eight-million-dollar land sale. They will be getting incentives through the state's Enterprise Zone program. They are also working with the Housing Authority, as, as I think they mentioned to you, and the Housing Authority did in their briefing at, at your quarterly work session, for ten million dollars in new market tax credits. You have it on your agenda this evening. You'll have it again on your agenda at the end of the month. EDA will have on the nineteenth, two sales contracts, purchase and sale contracts, one between them and Kroger, one between them and Cress and EG for the balance, and then there will be an overriding tripartite development agreement between all three parties. So, hopefully, by the end of this month, assuming everything moves forward, Kroger will have all the approvals it needs to come into Mr. Brusa with that big roll of site plans we all love to see so much, so we can get through them in twelve days? Eight days?
It depends.
Quickly. And then hopefully have this store open by the first quarter of next year, and it's a, it takes them forty-five weeks to build it.
That's very good.
Tight timeframe. Tight timeframe. We'd like to be closed on the real estate in June.
Are we marketing the other?
PRHA has that on the other corner.
Are they marketing that now? Is it ready to be marketed?
Not aggressively. It is ready to be marketed. I think what's going to happen is you're going to see the Kroger go up. We'll get these leases signed on the other space. That will prove the market, and then hopefully either Ellis Gibson will jump over quickly themselves, or somebody else will come into the marketplace and start competing with them for that property over there and see some more development next to that.
I think that piece is going to be very attractive once we get the development on the opposite side of the street there, so.
Once that traffic starts and the sales start kicking in and these other retailers can look and see the draw and verify the market. Chick-fil-A was a great, well, Walmart was your first seal of approval with regard to sales. Now Chick-fil-A, these folks.
Mr. Moody?
How about the infrastructure improvements on Frederick and near that development? Is that going to coincide with the, with the construction of Kroger and other places?
James is going to answer that for you.
The developer's been working with VDOT, the Turnpike Road project. If Turnpike Road continues on the schedule that it's on, just about the same time that Kroger opens, that Turnpike Road project will be approximately right in front of their driveway on Frederick, on Frederick Boulevard.
So, does that include Frederick piece as well? Because council was, we were, showed some renderings of the improvements to enhance the development and complement the development in that area.
The Midtown Corridor project, I'm assuming that's the one you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
The Turnpike Road project does not include that. City staff is actually working, I think, on a concept plan for that area, I think, between Turnpike and, I want to say either Arlington or Brighton, going, going down towards, I guess, the spin cycle.
Well, I guess what I'm, what I'm thinking of is between Airline and Turnpike, the...
The whole stretch.
The whole stretch there, mid-city. We're working, you're right, we did do a concept plan. And we're working with the developer too, to see how much of the responsibility will be put on, on the developer for this improvement. As you look across, if you're standing on the Norcom site and looking across Frederick, we do own the property that's across the street. EDA over the past maybe six years have bought nearly all the houses that were on that edge of Frederick. Let us get you a time schedule for what we may think is doable for that streetscape.
Ms. Randall?
I think one of the things that is going on in many of the other cities, when they put up these plans and bring them up, they put a diagram of some type of pictorial to give the public some idea of what you're bringing in. Because unless you get around to all of your civic legs, Joe, John Doe would not have any idea of what the perception is going to be. And many of your business partners don't always know what the plans are for a particular area. But I think if somewhere we could tie that in with our visuals to bring the public up, because a lot of people aren't going to read it, but if you show them something on their TV screen that is playing over and over, it makes a lasting impression. And if there are changes, many of your seniors can follow through, as well as those students will, will be utilizing those facilities. I think sometimes we lose sight. Everybody's not an abstract.
Sure.
Visualizer. And our people who are paying the taxes and are paying the bills, many of them are over thirty-five. And I think they need to have a visual picture as well.
I agree. Good job. All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, that's all we have.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question that's not related to what you just talked about, but in regards to Alexander Corner?
Yes, sir.
And some of the potholes throughout the city, are we, what are we doing in regards to those things?
Back up, James.
Alexander's Corner specifically, those signals should be energized within the next two to three weeks. Talk to the consultant, the contractor today, today about the paving operations out there. If there are any potholes specifically in the project area, there's a responsibility of the contractor specifically for the Alexander's Corner project. As they continue to address signals, take care of the pavement issues during, during the construction, at the close, once all the signals are up and operating, they actually go to mill and pave that whole project area. So, that'll be a complete as part of that project. As far as general pothole repair, the Poliworks Department is actually out riding the streets, addressing potholes. They're actually taking calls from citizens and addressing those concerns that citizens call them in.
Ms. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. I get a lot of questions about that too, Bishop, about Alexander's Corner. Is it, other than new signals, is there going to be traffic pattern changes?
There, yes, yes, there are. The slip lane, right there, coming off of Airline that you would get on the Portsmouth Boulevard, that goes away. There's some modifications, attorney movements off McLean and also off of Portsmouth Boulevard. The signals are going to get realigned, new pavement marking, pedestrian enhancements, and some additional signage to make it a little bit more clear of actually where, where you're supposed to go.
These are all safety improvements. The slip lane is really a hazard because people will try to turn right and look way over their shoulder. The angle is really bad, and then they may chicken out and stop on Portsmouth Boulevard, and the next person hits them, and that's, that's happened.
Been bad for thirty years. Mr. Meeks?
Long time.
It's two car dealerships right there, Prestige and Churchland. I know with the construction, they're notified and stuff, but their cars are getting filthy. I mean, just, they're constantly washing them, and I know it's nothing we can do, but I think we need to at least visit them, address them, you know? I mean, there are businesses, they're paying taxes. And then the other question I have is, over by City Park where the company's doing the pipe work, look like there's, are they going to, they're going to mill that whole street and repave it when they're done, or they're going to leave the street the way it is?
Okay, for the, the first one, we're working with Prestige Auto and the other car dealerships out there through our risk management department to address any of their detailing issues. As far as the City Park project, that's the replacement of an HRSD force main. What you see out there now is a temporary patch. They have to test the main first. Once they test the main, it's certified by HRSD, they'll do the tie-ins. I think they're scheduled to actually re-block the road within the next ten days or so to actually do those tie-ins. Once they do the tie-ins, they'll mill and pave that whole road in the work area.
Curb to curb?
They're going to go basically from the edge all the way back over to the curb. They won't do the whole street because they didn't do any impacts onto the one side, but the actual work area, the work area over to the road, the majority of the work is from Center Line over to the curb. So, it's going to be Center Line to curb, the whole intersection of City Park. Then when they jump over and get over by the cemetery, it's going to be on that side. So, it's going to be...
Where they actually doing damage?
Where they actually do damage over to the Center Line.
Okay. Ms. Simmons?
Before you leave.
Yes, ma'am.
And I've gotten a lot of calls, and I asked them to send an email, but I haven't seen one. The, the new streetlights that are at High and Court, which are now functioning and lovely, the electrical box that I thought was temporary, but now I realize doesn't look so temporary, that is, that seems to service those streetlights, the stoplights, is right in front of Trinity Church, the oldest, most historic church in this community. And it is hideous. It's almost as tall as I am and this wide.
We are...
I mean, I know we should have thought of that before, but people at Trinity are, and the historical folks are like, it is the most photographed corner in the city. This big... This big box... I mean, John, it's bigger than you.
I know.
It's just, it's hideous. You know, it used to be a little box like this on the pole. Now it's... Looks like somebody's little house.
What, is it freestanding now?
Yeah, it's a big metal thing. It's almost as tall as I am and as wide as me and you put together. And it's right in front of the sign.
Pretty darn wide.
Y'all set me up. We don't edit tapes.
A permanent structure there?
Yeah.
We've heard from the church.
Okay, good.
And we're trading telephone calls. I've expressed my concern internally. It's a work in progress.
Good.
We're looking to see what we can do.
I keep forgetting to ask, and so this is permitted.
I have to listen to y'all's ball jokes.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any city council liaison reports this evening? Do you have a motion for closed session if you choose to go in?
I move to go into closed section meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 for the following purposes: Consideration of contractual matters involving the positions of city auditor, city manager, and city attorney as permitted under subsections A.1 and A.7.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Ms. Edmas?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.
We are in closed session, thank you.